The time is now 7:00 PM and I'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. We're here at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin, in the City Hall Forum, and today is Monday, February 16th, 2015. Can I have a roll call?
Roll call shows all councilors present except for David Lubke.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3 is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements, 3A.
A proclamation celebrating the 10th anniversary of the Beloit International Film Festival.
Vice President Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Beloit, Wisconsin official proclamation. Whereas the Beloit International Film Festival marks its 10th season, February 20th to March 1st, 2015, with 10 days of 200 films and 150 filmmakers, and whereas the BIF celebrates a decade of bringing films, filmmakers, and visitors from throughout the country to our community, and whereas BIF has received the support and endorsement of business, industry, nonprofit organizations, and financial institutions throughout the community, and whereas through its related programs such as BIF Year-Round, BIF Outdoors, it has brought additional quality of entertainment to the people of this community throughout the past year, and whereas BIF enhances the creative life and reputation of Beloit internationally by attracting film artists from throughout the U.S. and abroad, and whereas this year BIF welcomes Randall Kleiser, the director of Grease, the most successful movie musical ever made, as the honorary chair, and whereas BIF engages at least 2,000 schoolchildren each year in development of critical viewing skills through the BIF, or Kids at BIF program, whereas BIF celebrates Beloit's downtown with eight screening venues and spectacular 10th anniversary opening extravaganza in venues and open spaces to launch the 10-day festival. Now therefore, the president of the City of Beloit City Council hereby honors the BIF on its 10th anniversary and thanks its staff and 600 volunteers for celebrating the city and its people throughout the power of film. The president further urges all citizens to enjoy these programs and to extend the welcome of our community to the filmmakers and visitors to Beloit. Presented this 16th day of February, 2015, Mark Spritzer, Council President.
Thank you. We want to thank the City Council for this proclamation. This has been an exciting year which is now coming to fruition this Friday. This is a matter, this is a production of 600 volunteers and all the businesses and financial institutions, educational institutions that come together each year to make this program work. It is, it's the result of a full year of work, and I'd just like to introduce Kristin Peterson, who is the Director of Marketing, who has done much of that work for us this year.
Thank you for recognizing us. I want to reiterate, there's hundreds of people who help us every year. We can't do it without you. And we're saying thank you to, with an all-free, family-friendly event, the first night, the opening block party, so we hope to see everyone downtown for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3B is the State of the City address. I will be postponing that address until our next meeting because I have a cold and would rather present it when I have more of a voice to do so, which brings us to item 4, Public Hearings.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow indoor alcohol sales in a C-2 neighborhood commercial district for the property located at 412 Liberty Avenue for Liberty Mart. The Plan Commission recommended denial 4 to 2.
Ms. Christensen.
The operator of Liberty Mart has filed this conditional use permit to allow indoor alcohol sales. On January 25th, 2010, the City Council revoked the Liberty Mart's alcohol beverage license due to alcohol sales to a minor. The property owner applied for and was denied a conditional use permit on May 16th, 2011 due to concerns of a negative, the negative impact alcohol sales would have on the surrounding neighborhood. Operations have since been transferred to the applicant's son, or the, sorry, the son of the property owner, and he is proposing the sale of liquor, beer, and wine at the subject property. The Beloit Police Department did conduct a survey of 24 homes in the area of the subject property. There were 14 residents in favor of alcohol sales and 10 opposed. They did have, Plan Commission held a public hearing and did have significant discussion with the applicant on alcohol sales, and I, they did recommend denial 4 to 2, and the reasoning why, Plan Commission, why they recommended denial was there was concern that even though there are 14 people for, there are still 10 opposed, and they didn't feel that was a strong enough neighborhood sentiment to introduce alcohol back in the neighborhood. And there is also a thought by a couple of the board members that mixing alcohol sales in essentially a residential neighborhood wasn't appropriate. So they did recommend denial. Included in your packet is a resolution in the affirmative, including the conditions that were recommended by staff. So if, so that's, those conditions were not recommended by Plan Commission, they were actually the staff recommended conditions that were in the original staff report.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on item 4A. If anyone wishes to address the council on item 4A, please approach the podium now. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lufte Katum, 412 Liberty Avenue, Beloit, Wisconsin. I just wanted to say hello, and this is one of the equipments that I have at the store right now that I use to card customers for cigarettes and other tobacco products, but it also can scan for alcohol to test if you're old enough for alcohol, like it'll tell me if you're 21 or older, and then if it, if you are 21 or older, it will flash green, which means that you're old enough. Red is no, so that's technically, won't happen. One thing that I do know is my dad will not be in the store. If I do get approved, he will no longer be part of the business. I will be taking over the business for good if I do get approved. If I don't get approved, then it's gonna go on to being what it is right now, just a regular convenience store. But, like I said, he will not be in the store at all if I do get approved. It's been in my family business for over 40 years. It's been passed down from my uncle, which is my dad's brother. It's been there, used to be a dairy store, a barber shop, and a liquor store, all inside that store. Then it just turned into a liquor store. And it's still in our business and it's running properly. We haven't had any problems, like major problems, the last couple of years. We did have one gang affiliated situation where the store was tagged from all three sides of the store, and then we did have one of our neighbors from across the street, his house was also tagged. The only thing that I usually get complaints about is due to customers' music, like their systems that they have in their cars is being too loud. I can't really control when they pass by, but I can control it when they do stop at my store. I tell them that they need to lower it because I have people around here that don't like that loud sounds, and it's very disturbing, and it also shakes my property, which knocks off products off the shelves inside the store, so I ask them to turn it down myself. So if you guys have any questions for me, for...
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on item 4A? If so, please approach the podium. Second call for anyone else wishing to speak on item 4A. Third and final call for anyone else wishing to speak on item 4A. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain questions or a motion. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I have more of a statement than a question. I do appreciate your effort to make a go of the family business. I am concerned about the 10 residents who are opposed to the sale of alcohol there, and I am concerned about the very residential nature of that area, and it's a, it's an area that's struggling, so I, you know, I wanted to let you know that I appreciate your efforts to, you know, to invest in your business and make a go of it, but I have to honor the residents' concerns there, so I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments, or is there a motion?
Just for the matter of getting it, bringing it to a vote, I will move for approval.
Moved by Haynes, is there a second? Second by DeForest, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Naye. This item fails 6 to 0. Item 5 is Citizens Participation. We have reached the point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless the item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting, or we may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. If anyone wishes to speak during Citizens Participation, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Second call for anyone wishing to speak during Citizens Participation. Third and final call for anyone wishing to speak during Citizens Participation. Seeing none, we'll close Citizens Participation and move to the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any councilor wishing to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda consists of items 6A through E, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Moved by Haynes, second by Kelly, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This is approved 6 to 0. Item 7 is Ordinances, we have none. Item 8 is Appointments, we have two appointments this evening. I, the undersigned Mark Spritzer, duly elected president of Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation by the Beloit City Council, hereby appoint the following citizen members to vacancies and terms indicated as follows. Set appointments being pursued to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held February 9th, 2015. To the Community Development Authority, David G. Baker of 2339 St. Born Drive, replacing Dr. Thomas Johnson for a term ending December 31st, 2015, and to the Equal Opportunities Commission, Jennifer L. Perot, 1343 Porter Avenue, replacing Matt Finnegan for a term ending June 30th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these appointments? Moved by DeForest, second by Hendricks, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This is approved 6 to 0, and I would like to announce the following vacancies and encourage anyone who's interested to apply to serve on one of these committees. It's a great way to get more involved and serve your community. On the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, we have one vacancy for a resident. Appointment Review Committee, one vacancy for a resident. Board of Appeals have one second alternate vacancy for a resident. The Board of Ethics has a vacancy for a former city councillor and three vacancies for residents. The Community Development, or the Board of Review has one vacancy for resident and two alternate vacancies for residents. Community Development Authority has one vacancy for a public housing resident. Equal Opportunities Commission, one vacancy for resident. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for resident. The Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for a resident and one for a youth representative, and the Traffic Review Committee has two vacancies for residents. That brings us to item 9, Councilor Activities and Upcoming Events. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I enjoyed the Legal Woman Voter Susan B. Anthony luncheon. That was a great turnout out at the Butterfly Club, and appreciated being reminded of how many people have fought and laid down their lives for the right to vote. Along those lines, really appreciated going to see the movie Selma, too, and would encourage you, if you're able, to rent that when it comes out. It really helps underscore what a great sacred privilege it is to be able to vote, and how many people have sacrificed a great deal for that. I was able to attend the Department of Transportation meeting regarding the I-9043 interchange and appreciated the residents who were there to share their concerns, and very appreciative of the DOT for continuing to meet with us and obtain our input and consider that in the plans as they move forward. I attended the School District of Beloit's Diversity Committee. I'm happy to be a member of that ad hoc committee as we work towards moving the school district forward and addressing the needs of all students. And then finally, really enjoyed today volunteering at Merrill Elementary School. I was able to teach some third graders about West Africa and thoroughly enjoyed that. And I am really looking forward to BIF. Thrilled to actually see the fire breathers that are supposed to be there Friday. How cool is that? So I'm very excited about the Block Party edition for families this Friday. Thank you. It just keeps growing and getting better and better. And I just wanted to make sure residents knew that there's a transit open house February 18th. It is from 10 to 2 at the Transfer Center, and from 4 to 6 at the Beloit Public Library. Particularly if you use our local transit, we want to encourage you to attend that open house and find out what we're looking at for the future, and we really want to hear your input and obtain your feedback, so we hope you can attend that. Thank you.
Counselor Kincaid.
I saw you a lot the last couple of weeks. The one place I didn't see you, though, was the legislative meeting at the library, and it was most impressive that we, our own legislator was there, and he did quite well for us. Thank you. And, but I think what was really important was to see that now that we have a director on board, he has clearly taken the bull by the horns, seems to be well averse to the issues and problems that we have at the library, and we look forward to working with him in the future.
Counselor Hendricks.
Hello. As I mentioned last meeting, the Minority Excellence Organization at Beloit Memorial High School hosted a soul food luncheon this past Friday, and it was a great turnout, so we're very grateful for all the support. I am one of the co-advisors, so the kids worked hard getting all those people through the line in a short amount of time. It's hard doing community service and customer service when you're not getting paid, and you're young, and there are adults that want what they want when they want it, but they worked really hard, and so I appreciate all the support, and they raised a lot of money for their upcoming trip during spring break, so we're grateful for that. Got a chance to attend the father-daughter dance, which I do every year. I don't crash, I promise, but my cheerleaders work, they volunteer there, so the turnout, they estimated about 750 people this year, so we're gonna look to moving it from the cafeteria at the high school to a bigger location, because that keeps growing and growing as well. But it was so good to see so many fathers with their daughters, and they range from babies all the way up to high school, so many fathers there with their kids, so that was good to see, very positive. I also volunteered at Merrill. I got to teach a step class and the history of steps, so I got my workout and I got to help little kids learn about the history of some of the step culture. So that was fun, and I'm going back again to do it all over again, because more classes want me to go. And then I'm looking forward to the Grease sing-along for BIF. I can't make it on Friday, we have a basketball game, the last home game, by the way, but I'm looking forward to going to Grease and singing, and I may dress up.
You may dress up?
May. It's suggested.
Yes.
I want to see you dress up.
I'll post it.
That's awesome.
That's it.
Which version are you gonna go with?
I don't know. That's it, thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
Well, as always, I'm the last one to report, almost the last one to report, and I did see a lot of Sheila and everybody this week, this last two weeks. I attended the legislative breakfast that the Chamber put together on Friday, and then, and then I also went to the Susan B. Anthony Celebration Luncheon, which, you know, Sheila already went to that, too. And I have little notes today, because I always forget by the time I get here. I also went to the library legislative event and to the night of jazz spaghetti dinner, where the middle school band and the high school bands all played, and I had all three of my children playing, or pretending to play. Let's see, I'm not done yet. I also attended an event at the country club right before they were getting, getting ready to tear it down, where they took donations, so it was a fundraiser for the Rock County Arts, so I'm not sure what that's gonna end up being, but it's something to support the arts in Rock County. And I'm also part of the ad hoc adversity, not adversity, diversity, diversity group for the high, for the school district, and I went to the M.O.A. Luncheon, and I did crash the father-daughter dance, went to take some pictures. I was shocked, and how many people were there? I, nothing, I wouldn't have, never expected that many people there. All the little girls were all dressed up, and it was just, just really heartwarming. And I think that's it.
Vice President Haynes.
Wow, I'm tired from listening. Okay, well, it was my pleasure to present at the Department of Transportation's public hearing on the interchange reconstruction. It was good to see that all the people who came out got their questions answered and how well this project is developing. Also, we expect to spend a lot of time at BIF in the next upcoming 10 days, but other than that, that's really all I have to offer.
And I also attended the Legal Woman Voter Susan B. Anthony brunch, and I attended the Downtown Beloit Association Annual Awards Ceremony, where our own city manager was honored with an award for his contributions over the 12 years that he's been here, and I also attended the retirement party for Beloit School Superintendent Steve McNeil. That brings us to item 10, City Manager's Presentation, 10A.
An update on the Neighborhood Revitalization Activities.
What am I doing? What button am I hitting, Larry? There we go. Okay. What I wanted to be able to do for you all is give you an update on what we've been doing in the Neighborhood Revitalization arena, because you delegated a lot of the housing stuff to the CDAA, and so Chuck sees some of it, Nana sees some of it, but you as a group don't get to see kind of what we've been doing with the houses and the program, so I thought a nice presentation before all of you and the public was warranted. So what we're gonna go over tonight is the Neighborhood Revitalization Program that we're currently operating, which includes the Acquisition Rehab Program, which is funded with through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and the Home Program. Those are the two grant funds that we have out there that allow us to actually acquire houses and then rehab them. CGBG funds can also be used for that function, but because we have somewhat, there's greater demands for those resources, we don't use those. And then the Acquisition Demo Program, we do have the Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds for that as well, and then, as you may recall, you budget money each year through the Capital Improvement Program to allow us to do some acquisition and demolition. And then finally, the Housing Rehab Assistant Programs, which you've seen bits and pieces of over the years as we've made modifications, but we don't usually report all the activity that we accomplish with that. The right side to go forward or left? Which one? Okay. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program, those grant funds were received from the state to acquire and rehab houses that were subject of attacks or bank foreclosure, and then once rehabbed, they're required to be sold to income-eligible owner occupants. We did complete eight houses under this program through NSP-1, NSP-3. There were two actually pots of money that we applied for and received, and we're actually at this point revolving those funds, so we were able to do more than we originally planned. And then we had partners in those grant applications, so NHS and Family Services were part of those applications, so NHS also completed houses, they completed four houses, which were sold to income-eligible owner occupants. They actually did a new construction as part of theirs, and then Family Services rehabbed one house on Hackett Street and sold it to an income-eligible owner occupant. And then with this, I'm gonna turn it over to Terry, because these first few houses started with Tom Clippert, and he was involved with those, but Terry's the one that actually is responsible for getting the rehab done and getting all the work done on these projects.
So the first one, the first that we're gonna go through is through the first set of funding, the NSP-1 program. We did four houses, rehab houses under NSP-1. So the first one we'll talk about is 1157 Elm Street. Each of these slides will have some before and after pictures. In the beginning, we weren't so good about getting some before pictures, so I apologize if we're lacking in that area. We've gotten better as time's gone on. So this property, we purchased in 2009 for $34,900. All of these properties are foreclosed and vacant. So, and then we sold it in 2012 for $52,900 to an owner occupant. There's some before and after pictures. There was carpet in there, I think. This was bought when Tom Clippert was here, so I don't, I didn't see the before, and they refinished the floors, sited the garage. I'm not real familiar with all of the other rehab that went into that property, so I can't offer anymore on that one. 827 Garfield was purchased in 2010 for $29,900. It sat on the market for almost four years, but it did sell for $45,900. What we did with this property is not too much on the outside, because it already looked really nice, but we resurfaced the, we got a new driveway, the backyard was completely redone, because it was real bad, there were all these bushes and gardens in the back and everything, and we refenced it, so it would be really nice for a family. This is a two-bedroom property, that's why we think it stayed on the market for so long. The most that we did with that property was we redid the kitchen and re-carpeted. 615 McKinley was purchased in 2009 for $26,000. It was sold to an owner occupant in 2014 for $39,000. Again, this was a two-bedroom property, so we believe along with the housing crash is why it sat on the market for so long. With this property, there was some exterior work done with the shutters and the painting and the flower box, which was my favorite. A lot of yard work was done, again, the back was cleared out because it was kind of jungly back there. It does have a detached garage, too, and then the kitchen was redone. All of these properties are sold with appliances, so we do furnish appliances because these are low-income families, and it just helps to be able to provide them with those kind of things. 932 Ninth Street was also purchased in 2009 for $43,000. We sold this property to an owner occupant in 2014 for $65,000. This had, along with two of the other properties I just showed you, had two rounds of rehab. We believe this property, the reason it sat on the market, because this is a four-bedroom property, it sat on the market for so long because the kitchen was really bad. It was just very outdated, and once we kind of relooked at why these properties weren't selling, we redid the kitchen again. We completely remodeled it, we removed a door that was in the kitchen that kind of messed up the flow of the countertops, and we moved it into the dining room. There, you can't see it in this picture, but there is a four-season, a three-season porch off the back, so we moved the door off the dining room to the four-season porch. Once we did that, this property sold within three, three or four months. Once we did that, we also re-carpeted the entire place and added a bathroom. So here's some before pictures of the kitchen that was redone, the doorway there, I hate to say I don't know what that doorway is for, and there's the refinished kitchen and the new bathroom. This also had all appliances sold with the property. 122 Hackett was a tax foreclosure property that the city picked up in 2011 for $13,800. We sold this property to, in 2014, to, for $69,900, to a first-time homeowner who was a first-time homeowner who was very, very excited to get this property. As small as it looks, this was a four-bedroom house. There are two bedrooms on the lower level and two bedrooms upstairs. Uh, so, it was, uh, it was perfect for this particular family. Um, as you can see, we, well, when we acquired the property, it was filled with junk in the front yard, including a big cannon, I don't know if anybody ever remembers seeing that there. And then it sat up on the hill on Bluff Street for a while, and then I'm not sure where it went after that, but, um, it was pretty cool. We kinda wanted to keep it, I don't know where we would've put it, but, um, so, this property was, uh, in terrible shape when we picked it up. There was a lot of junk and everything inside and, uh, the kitchen was completely redone, all of the floors were redone, it was repainted, the wallpaper was taken down, but there wasn't any major, major construction, um, to the property. It was a lot of surface work, the biggest construction that happened was in the kitchen. And then we redid the patio in the front, so here's some more of the before pictures. And then here's the refinished kitchen, the appliances aren't showing here, we, uh, added the appliances later to try to get some interest in the house. This is the refinished floors and the refinish, refinished paint job. Uh, seven forty-five Vernon is the first house we'll look at under the NSP Three Program. That's not right. The last house we looked at was under the NSP Three Program, um, so that was the second round of funding that we got through the NSP Program. So, seven forty-five Vernon, uh, was purchased for twenty-four-five, I believe, in twenty twelve, or twenty-thirteen, I can't remember. Um, the house was sold to an owner occupant in twenty thirteen for seventy-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the exterior work included a new fence repaired siding and a new driveway. There wasn't a lot to do on the outside of this house, but this house on the inside, uh, the lower level was beautiful, it had, uh, beautiful hardwood floors, original woodwork, has two bedrooms in the, on the first level. Once we got to the kitchen, that's when, um, it needed a little bit of help and some reworking there in the back. Upstairs, this property, um, had almost a mother-in-law apartment, but it was chopped up in a way that wouldn't, it just wouldn't work for a family or a single-family house. So, the upstairs was completely gutted and rearranged. Um, so here's the kitchen, uh, before and after. Um, there's the floor, see how you can see before and after, doesn't, it's not much of a difference, but, uh, that's because most of the work went into the upstairs. Uh, we redid the bathroom in the downstairs and we added a bathroom upstairs. Eight twenty-three Saint Lawrence was purchased in twenty, purchased in two thousand twelve for twenty thousand dollars. Uh, it was sold in two thousand fourteen for sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, this, you can see there's a drastic change in the before and after. Uh, this was a three-unit property that was, uh, in really sorry shape when we picked it up. I hope you put the cardboard pictures in. No? Um, the, between the house and the garage, you couldn't see it until you walked right up to it. They had patched the holes in the side of the garage with cardboard that was stapled up. Um, it was, uh, it was in pretty sad shape. But, so this one had lots and lots of work done to it. Um, the entire floor and the first floor was taken out and redone, like, all the way to the studs. There's a picture that we have, we couldn't put all the pictures in here because we'd be here forever, but, uh, you can actually see the dirt because it was completely redone because it was sagging and everything. Um, so these are the before pictures, um, this was the tiny kitchen before, they're on the right-hand side. Uh, it was, uh, probably about as big as this table here. And, uh, we opened up the wall, uh, there was a, a bathroom and a kitchen that occupied this space in the kitchen. Uh, I wish we had a picture with that, with that, uh, refrigerator closed, but it was a beautiful kitchen in the end. We re-carpeted, um, we added a bathroom to the first floor with a master bath and another, uh, half-bath, which is what you see in the lower level there, or the lower picture there, um, so people didn't have to go through the master bedroom to use the bathroom if they were over visiting. So, there's a, there was another half-bath. This house sold, when we put it on the market, it sold in two months, I think it was? Yeah, two months, it was, uh, it was a really good buy. Uh, the only downside to this is there was no garage, uh, for this property, so, um, whoever, whoever bought this property, there's no garage for them, but we did put in a shed.
They were very excited.
Yeah, they were very excited. Has a huge front yard, no backyard, but a huge front yard, so, well, it's a corner house, so it was a pretty big yard for, they had two children or one child, and I think she was, um, pregnant, so.
They put up a fence after.
Thirteen ten West Grand Avenue, uh, we purchased this house in two thousand twelve for twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we do have an accepted offer right now on this house for seventy thousand. Uh, the, uh, Bank Mutual, not Bank Mutual, I don't remember the name of the bank off the top of my head, but with this property, they also donated five seventeen Liberty, which, um, we'll just show on a list later, uh, for demolition. So, they, huh?
It was Bank Mutual.
Was it Bank Mutual? Oh, it was Bank Mutual. Um, so, in the property, the five seventeen was donated at the same time, um, as we purchased this property, so we kinda got two houses for one, um, which was very nice that the banks are willing to work with us like that. Um, you can see the exterior work that was done on this house, uh, it's a, it's a very nice, um, typical three-bedroom home, these are the before pictures. Um, the, I tried to talk Scott into leaving the wall colors, no, I didn't. We changed the wall colors. Um, there were a lot of issues with this, uh, property, um, a lot of them were cosmetic, there weren't a lot of structural issues like the previous house that I showed you, but there were a lot of cosmetic issues that would prevent this property probably from being sold the way it was. So, here are the after pictures with the, uh, the kitchen and the bathroom and, um, the, uh, upstairs. So, the Acquisition Rehab Program, um, did you already do this slide?
No.
Oh.
So, then, um, that was the NSP Program. The Home Funds can be used in a similar fashion, however, we don't have to foreclose on the property in order to use Home Funds. Um, we can use the Home Funds to acquire and rehab, um, rehab, acquire and rehab houses and sell them, but we still have to sell them to income-eligible homeowners. Um, so, three twenty-six Saint Lawrence was completed under, under this program and then three eighteen Moore and ten oh-nine Central are currently underway. Um, and then this is the before and after of three twenty-six Saint Lawrence. It was purchased in two thousand and four for nineteen thousand dollars, not under this program. The city had purchased it when we were doing the Neighborhood Development Initiative and then we didn't have enough funds to do this house at the end of the day. Um, so, we, when we had extra Home Funds, we came, I think before you, to talk about putting it into this house, um, and then it sold, um, in two thousand fourteen for sixty thousand, um, to an income-eligible family. I don't know if you wanna talk about these photos, since you were part of the rehab.
This property was also a two-unit when, uh, when it started, this is a historical, or it's on the historic register, I hope I said that right. Uh, so it was a two-unit, when you walked in the front door, the ceiling was actually falling in, um, the back of the structure, we tore the back of the structure off and, uh, made it into a single-family. We took the one unit, uh, on the right-hand side of the property and made that into a master bedroom suite, so there's a bedroom bath on the first floor and then two bedrooms and a full bath upstairs. So, these are some of the before pictures, um, and these are, uh, some of the ba, uh, the after pictures. There was a refrigerator when we sold the house, we just didn't have it when this picture was taken. I can do this one. Uh, so, the Acquisition Demolition Program, we purchase houses through the bank and tax foreclosures, um, unless we get something donated, um, through a bank like we did, uh, before. Staff evaluates whether the house is worth rehabbing. Uh, funding available for demolition includes, um, the NSP Program Funds and Capital Improvement So, we've, we've just acquired, or we didn't just acquire this one. Five ten West Grand, uh, was demolished in the vacant lot, was sold to an adjacent church. Eleven twenty-six Forest Avenue was demolished in two thousand and ten, two thousand nine or two thousand and ten, um, and that is still available for sale, it's just a vacant lot. Uh, thirteen twenty-two Porter Avenue is where the community, where Community Action has their lease, uh, or their, um, that we lease that to them for their community garden. Uh, five seventeen Liberty is the one that I told you about that was donated to us. That house was, uh, very close to the house next door, you could hardly, I mean, like, two people could walk next to each other to get through it, so we demolished that and we sold it to the neighboring property owner, um, who didn't have a backyard until they, they got this. Eight twenty Parker Court was sold to NHS and they constructed a new house on that property. And twelve oh-four Prairie Avenue was sold to a neighbor for yard space. Eleven twenty-three Highland, um, is also still available for sale. Seven thirty-six Parker Avenue was sold to a neighboring church and they use that for green space. Seven oh-nine Central is still available for sale. Five twenty North Street is, uh, the one we just acquired under tax foreclosure and the demolition should happen within the next couple of weeks. We already have the neighboring property owner interested in having that as green space. This is a corner lot, but it's on a very small lot, um, so it'll just make his property kind of a nice, nice-sized lot for him. The CIP, uh, Program, we, each year, we can pick up about four to six houses, um, during the tax foreclosure process and then we can demolish them. We make the remaining vacant lots available to the neighboring property owners and in additional, two to four houses are condemned and demolished each year through the condemnation Uh, the Housing Assistance Loan Program is funded through CDBG and Home Funds and that is a program that, um, assists owner-occupied, uh, property owners with low-interest loans. Sometimes they can qualify for deferred payments. Uh, we also do rental rehab loans, uh, distressed property loans, construction loans and lead-hazard reduction grants. Uh, in two thousand fourteen, we had, uh, twelve loans to homeowners for a loan, a total loan amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars in improvements. Eight loans were for investor owners for a total of fifteen units for a hundred and forty-one thousand one sixty-five and eight lead-hazard control forgivable loans for almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so there were twenty-eight loans for thirty-five units for four hundred and twenty-three thousand one eighty-six. Additionally, we had eight owner-occupant loans in process at the end of two thousand fourteen and ten rental rehab loans in proc, process in addition to that number there. That's all I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions? Councilor DeForest?
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't get to the button. Sorry, there was ten rental units in process, I'm just trying to...
Um, yes, ten rental loans in process.
Okay, good. Glad you heard that. Glad we made those funds available for rental units, too. I, I wanted to ask, do you have a rough idea in terms of the rehab costs? Uh, I know we're not trying to make money on this program, but are we barely breaking out even? Um, I just wanna make sure that we're not spending tons of money on rehab costs. I know that it looks good because we buy them cheap and we sell them at a higher price, but if we're spending a ton on rehab, are we doing okay in that department?
That's a good question and it's a hard question to answer, but, um, we do spend quite a bit on the rehab. Uh, the NSP Program, you should know, it's prohibited by federal regs for us to make any profit on, on the properties, because the, the program is intended to pick up the worst of the worst, the ones that are gonna sit there for years and just decay and bring property values down. So, some of these, uh, some of these properties, there were significant rehab costs, um, involved. Some of the earlier ones, uh, didn't have as much rehab cost, but then they sat on the market for, you know, three to four years, so, um, are you looking for specific numbers?
No, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, are, are we getting in trouble at all with the rehab costs? And part of the problem I know is you start uncovering more problems as you're rehabbing a house. Are we doing okay financially with the program?
Um, I think, I think we are. We have to look at the program as an investment because the benefit to the community or the benefit to the neighborhood, when we buy these properties, that most of them have already been vacant for three or four years, so there's been no property taxes paid anyway. Um, and it's bringing the value of the homes around the neighborhood, um, down. The city has to take care of them, we have to board them up, we have to mow their lawns, we have to, you know, shovel the walks and things like that, so, and no investor will touch these because of the rehab costs. So, uh, we get these funds in order to, there's kind of a built-in hit, if you will, with the funds, and then we also can sell them to owner occupants that are, um, invested in the community. There is a deed restriction on the properties, so they can't sell it, um, sometime between five and fifteen years, depending on the subsidy amount and if they got down payment assistance. Um, so, uh, that's another benefit that we're lowering our rental, um, numbers.
Great, thank you.
I should also mention that under the Neighborhood, um, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, one of the things we had was thirty thousand dollars for down payment assistance that we gave to Neighborhood Housing Services, so they also assisted people, uh, buying other homes, these homes and other homes with down payment assistance.
Great.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to, I mean, uh, and I think what, we end up picking up houses that sit vacant for a number of years and so people aren't willing to invest in them, and, um, I'm gonna put Norm on the spot, just because Norm has told me that, you know, a vacant house causes, you know, criminal activity, um, so, I mean, he feels that a big part of crime prevention is, cause some of these programs that we do, um, because a vacant house and abandoned house brings down a whole neighborhood. Um, so if we step in, we're stepping in on properties that the private sector won't touch. Um, we're, we're leaving houses out there for the private sector to pick up, which they do, as, um, Larry reminds you each year with the tax foreclosure, um, and so we're picking up what the private sector doesn't wanna do, um, and we have grant funds that allow us to do that. And because of the sale of three twenty-six Saint Lawrence, we had another sixty thousand that came back in in Home Program income, so then we can use that again. Um, so, we're not breaking even, but there's, we're not running out of grant funds either and we continue to have NSP funds, too.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Item ten B.
The Annual Landmarks Commission Report for two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. Blazer.
Let's say, bring it up, it's the right. Oh, for a second I saw myself on TV, I think I finally made it. Once again, it's my pleasure to report the annual activity for the Beloit Landmarks Commission. It's also our obligation, under Section thirty-two oh-five-ten of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, to give this report. Under thirty-two oh-six-two of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, any, any alteration designated of a designated landmark, landmark site, or structures within the historic district in the city shall first require a certificate of appropriateness. And during the year of two thousand and fourteen, we, or, actually, the Landmarks Commission monitors the, the, uh, twelve, hundred and twelve properties in the Bluff Street District, hundred and seventy-three properties in the College Park District, four properties in the Merrill Street District, and forty-one individual-listed landmarks. The Commission, Landmarks Commission, consists of myself, who's the chair, Alex Blazer, working with a number of dedicated people on the Commission, Vice Chair Zworth Vader, Donna Johnson, Ellen Joyce, Terry Kay, Steve Truesdale, Steve Volmer, and the City Councilor Charles The Landmarks Commission met ten times in two thousand and fourteen and we looked at fifty-three COAs, applications during that process. Twenty-seven of the fifty-one percent were approved by the staff. Additions and the CO, uh, COAs consisted of additions, three new constructions, chimneys, tuck-pointing, three, demolitions, one, fence and retaining walls, ten, garage repairs, construction, four, gutters, fascias, soffit, fifteen, handrails and porches, nine, historic plaque, zero, local landmarks designations, zero, ramps, sidewalk steps, pavements, three, roof repairs and replacements, twenty-two, signs and miscellaneous items, one, siding, seven, windows and doors, fifteen. Additional activities of the Landmarks Commission during this time were to submit the grant, submit for grant funding for a new intensive survey and... submit for grant funding for a new intensive survey in historic properties funded to be awarded in the spring of 2015. Bluff Street Neighborhood Association was created to facilitate outreach to the Bluff Street Historical District, increased follow-up inspections to ensure compliance. Progress was made with the design and the Historic District signage program. And I know that I was short, but that's pretty much all I have. I would like to thank Stephanie Hummel for presenting, for creating this presentation, and there I am again, and here I go.
Are there any questions, Counselor DeForest?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Can you speak to the nature of denials? I mean, what are the most frequent causes for denial, for the COAs?
Well, from the ones that I remember, that we've actually denied, is because somebody wants to do something that's way outside the realm of maintaining the historic appeal of a property. The other things are sometimes cost, they could do something one way that would cost much less, that would be appropriate, or it's not, but basically, it's because it doesn't quite apply, you know, it doesn't stay with the realm of historic appeal.
So, my concern is for the 49% that aren't approved? And maybe Julie needs to answer this. I mean, is, is the staff working with them? I mean, because then, there's probably an issue that needs to be addressed at their property, and if they're not getting the COA, how are we working with them to make sure that their, their issues are addressed in a way that's historically appropriate?
Well, sometimes, we give them advice on what might be appropriate, and sometimes, they return with a different COA, hence, it may be, it may, the numbers may look a little bit different than they really appear. Julie, do you have anything to say about that?
I mean, I, some of the things, we just don't want them to do, like, there are some things, like, if they wanted to demolish something that we don't want them demolish, we just don't want them to do it, so we're recommending denial. I think some cases, you're getting where the commission is, gives a great deal of guidance on what they will endorse, and they come back with something in the middle, you know, some kind of compromise. I think Landmarks Commission spends a lot of time discussing, discussing with the applicant when they come to the meeting. So, I mean, it's, I don't think we're finding cases where people are then doing work without COAs. I mean, they're coming back with a different project, or they're not doing what the commission did not think was historically accurate.
Okay. Do you have a sense of how many times there's a compromise that can be reached, or they can come, how many times they've come back and been able to obtain the COA?
I don't, I'd have to look at numbers. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Because we have a different staff. I don't go to Landmarks Commission, so I can't speak to that.
Maybe Charles can. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
So, is she that number that you said that was not approved? I think it's, it's, it's 51 are approved by staff. It's not like they're not approved. When you were asking about the, what about the 40, the 40-some percent that's denied, and according to the report, it's that half of them are, more than half of them are approved by staff. They don't even come to the commission.
Yeah, so there's some that are staff, some items can be staff-approved, and some are commission-approved.
You know, look at them. So, it's not that they're being denied.
Yeah, I mean, I know they've denied some COAs, but I don't think they're.
That's not enough.
It's not a significant number.
No.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Seeing none, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Item 11 is reports from boards and city officers. We have none this evening. Item 12 is adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.